Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. Thank you. I'll turn this over to Councilmember Schwartz for the pledge in a moment.
All of you will stand and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, I'm going to turn the floor back over to Mayor. He's going to make a statement on behalf of council.
Ladies and gentlemen, both here and at home, we face many challenges today. Challenges from nature, be it a tornado, hurricanes, flooding, drought, challenges from the coronavirus and other health concerns, challenges to our economy and unemployment, challenges of societal mistrust, mistrust of government officials and our police, mistrust of the media, mistrust of elected officials, and sometimes mistrust of each other, challenges to realize that we all are much more alike than we are different. As we come together, as we overcome these challenges together, your city, your police, are committed to providing a safe place for voices to be heard while at the same time serving and protecting the residents, businesses, and demonstrators alike. Please join us in a moment of silence as we reflect on how we move forward with understanding, service, and respect for one another. A moment of silence, please. Okay. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes? I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a public hearing, PUD 13-5.
This is an application filed by John Koppelcheck, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite 500, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45431. The applicant, the application requests approval of an amendment to add multifamily and student housing as permitted uses to PUD 13-5. The properties are located on the southwest corner of Germany Lane and Wine Cup Court, further described as Book One, Page Nine, parcels 83, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, and 91 on the Green County property tax atlas.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present tonight who would like to make a presentation? Good evening.
Hi, councilwomen and councilmen. Appreciate your time tonight. Jared Barnett with Synergy and Mills Development. We're here to look at a piece of ground frankly we have under contract. We have not yet closed on it. But as we looked at the parcel, you know us, we're office developers. That's our plans for this site. But given the world we're in, there's lots of change going on. So we looked at the existing zoning in some areas where perhaps a zoning would make sense that wasn't there. And the two things that stuck out at us were student housing, given the proximity to Wright State University, and multifamily. Again, it's not our intention to develop that for the site, but given the surrounding zoning and what's there in discussions with the city, it was a zoning that could make sense. So prior to us closing on the property, we're trying to look at adding those two uses to the existing uses that are a combination of B3 and O1 uses. So happy to discuss after staff presentation any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. All right. Ms. Randy?
Evening, Mayor. Member of City Council. The case you have before you is PUD 13-5. It's the Germany Lane PUD amendment. Again, the applicant's looking to add additional uses to the 4.2 acre PUD. The property is located in northern Beaver Creek. It's actually on the south side of Colonel Glenn Highway, just east of where Germany Lane and Colonel Glenn meet. So, and that is across from the Sonic, if you know where the Sonic is, up on Colonel Glenn. So we're talking, the area in blue here is the 4.15 acre parcel, PUD. And again, they're looking to add high-density residential and dormitories in association with universities as among the permitted uses within the PUD. You can see here on green across from the PUD, that's actually Zink Road dead ends right at this location. And there's a tree line right at the property line. And we have plans to extend Zink Road and connect that with Germany Lane. And that'll be directly across the property from this PUD, right where they're proposing. The property, again, is zone CPUD 13-5. It's surrounded by commercial uses with B3 being on the east and west and B2 being on the north. To the west is a commercial office building. To the east is a extended stay hotel, a rather large building. And then to the north is, there is a auto, auto used auto dealer. This is a construction company and their offices. And then there's, the gas station's just to the north. And this is a non-conforming residential, but it's a rental residential. It's non-conforming, but it is zoned for B2 uses. Seen here, this is actually the 2020 land use plan proposed. And this area is in red on the land use plan. It's a regional commercial and office. This proposed use doesn't line up exactly with the land use plan, but there is the ability for Planning Commission and City Council to accept a rezoning or an amendment if they feel it falls in spirit of the land use plan. We have a lot of high-density residential that's on the perimeter and just on the edge of regional commercials, such as the Wright Town Commons up here. There's Mallard Landing, Ashton Brook. Those are just a few of the high-density residential that abuts commercial centers. So that's one of the reasons why we're recommending approval. Another is because of the adjacent uses, being, one being a hotel, another being an office, and particularly because across Colonel Glenn is Wright State University. And there is an opportunity for housing. I know there's been a lack of housing for students in the area. And there, and on the Beaver Creek side, there is no real housing on the north side of Colonel Glenn within the city of Beaver Creek. So this is, other than the Wright Town Commons, which is up right on Zink Road to the north. But there is very limited opportunity for residential in Beaver Creek on that side. Also, this property was rezoned seven years ago. The allowed uses are B3 uses, a modified list of B3 uses, and then all the O1 uses. And it's still sat with no movement for the last seven years. So this does offer an opportunity to redevelop that site, that four and a half acres with the, there's four older houses that, you know, could use to be removed and a lot of outbuildings as well. So this is a good proposed use or in addition to the PUD. Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval of the applicant's request. And I'll be here to happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you. And as you just heard, this is a public hearing. And so at this point, the public is invited to come up and make comments if they wish. Is there anyone here that would like to address council on this application? Is there any written input? In that case, we will close the public hearing. Council input. It's, any, any comments from anybody? Just chime in.
Okay. I have a couple of comments. Overall, I think it's a very acceptable use for the piece of property, especially given its proximity to the highway, to Colonel Glenn Highway, to the university. My comments are maybe for each, each of you. Have you had any discussions with Wright State University? Do you know if they are in need of more student housing? You mentioned dormitories in the presentation.
Sure. We have not had any discussions with Wright State University. Again, we haven't even closed on the property. In the past 10 years, we've had lots of conversations with the university as well as other student housing developers about this area. Now, higher education is one of those things that's changing a lot too right now. So who knows? But given where that shakes out, there is not, there's very little on-campus student housing at the university currently. And student housing today, as somebody with a senior that's just graduated, looks a lot like apartment dwelling, more so than it does dormitories. So I think the dormitory language was from your code. But what we'd be looking at is probably more of an apartment look, the student housing of today or general multifamily. But no specific discussions regarding that.
Okay. Thank you. Randy, if, if allowed, are there height restrictions for a building like a apartment complex?
On a, on a PUD, it's 65 feet. But on this location, you know, there's, there may be additional requirements because of the Wright Patterson Air Force Base flight line. But across the street, the sewing medical center is like 95 feet. But really, this is going to be based on the amount of parking they can fit in. Four and a half, 4.15 acres is a small size. So even at nine and a half dwelling units, assuming you're not, you're talking 40, less than 40 units. But in terms of height, 65 feet, but I really wouldn't see it getting to be a six-story building, a six-story building, just because of the number of units.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I think it's a very nice idea. I think there's a lot that's here that fits in the B3 zone. The Zink Road extension is really exciting in 2021 because I remember being a broke student walking to campus. And I think this will be very nice for those students that, that try and get there. So congratulations on that. Thanks.
Anyone else? Sir? All right. I have no further comment. It's, it gives options. And that land, like you say, has been sitting vacant for quite some time. All right. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion to approve ordinance, not approve, but to move ordinance 20-04 onto the second reading. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is a public hearing, Z 20-1.
This is an application filed by Richard Franks, 1820 Maple Lane, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45432. The application requests the rezoning of 6.283 acres of land from R-1A1 family residential district to A-1 agricultural district. The property is located on the east side of Maple Lane, approximately 200 feet north of the intersection of Maple Lane and Hull Road. The property is further described as Book Five, Page Nine, Parcel 33 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. And I see the applicant's ready to go.
Yes, sir.
Please give us a name and address, please.
My name is Richard Franks. I'm a residential property owner. I'm not a business developer or property developer. So 1820 Maple Lane is my residence currently, as you see stated there. And I'd like an opportunity to present my application to the council today.
Okay.
So I'll walk you through this perspective here. This is our lot. This was a basically 6.28 acre wooded lot when we bought the property about seven years ago. We plotted out the middle area and put a house there. What I'd like to point out is the properties to the north, northeast is the Reeves. They're setting on about a 5.2 acre lot. And there's about 440 feet of dense wood between our property dwelling and theirs. To the northwest is the Ferguson's. They set on about two and a half acre lot. And again, there's about a 205-foot barrier between our property dwellings. And the reason I point that out is that's really the only two residents near us or adjacent to us that would have any kind of concern or impact. And I actually heard from the Reeves that they endorsed our plan in our application last week. So appreciated that. What I do want to point out is the property adjacent to us on the south side of our lot in the east side. So we have about 770 feet of, linear feet of property adjacent to Green County Park's property. And then to the east of that is another 420, I believe. So close to 1,400 linear feet of property adjacent to them. So I point that out as relevant because on the other side, and I'll show it on the next chart, but right now, as we're looking at this chart, I'd like to point out a couple of things. So I built an outbuilding, accessory building behind my house, a two-story barn about three years ago. So at that point in time, there was an option presented us to, to rezone instead of doing the variance. So I chose to do the variance because I was on contract. So I knew there would be an opportunity in time, maybe in the future, to seek rezoning. I'm there. There's a couple of issues that have, have come to light. I've got a four-year-old son now, so I've got that to take care of as well and consider. But also, what Green County had done to us in this area is they had taken that 29-acre residential park and converted it to a disc golf park. So I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. But I'll point out due south of my house and right up on the property line is a basket. That is hole number 17. If you look due left up against my property is hole number 18. The relevance there is by the time these guys get done playing golf and drinking, 17 and 18 are a little bit challenging for me. I've had a lot of folks walking through my property, to the point of where my barn is, two weeks ago, my son was back there and I had two guys walk through the woods. So I ran around back and caught them. And they supposedly were looking for their disc. So I've got a security and a safety issue there I'm trying to address, as well as I'm trying to utilize the property in its capacity. So my son, I do have a, my in-laws have a farm in West Virginia, about 150 acres, got some cattle. My son, the son has shown some interest. I would like to maybe have some chickens or something like that that I could pen up in the backyard and allow him to have that experience as well. But really, my primary concern is the property was a farm. About 50 years ago, of course, this whole area was a farm. So I understand that. It's got a woven welded box fence, about 48 inches tall right now around the property. A lot of that's in disarray. And the guys will just walk right over it. So I put signage up. It doesn't matter. I still get a steady stream from daylight to dusk, seven days a week, of patrons coming through my property. So I'm trying to head off in altercation. And I really want to put a fence up to be able to secure my property. And, and that's really why I'm here today is to seek your support in doing so. So if you have any questions, I'll be fair to ask.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Randy, I believe you're back again, aren't you, sir?
Yes, sir. This case is Z 20-1. They're looking to rezone a little over six and a quarter acres from R1A, single-family residential, to an A1 agricultural district. Again, this property is located just east of Haynes Road, quarter mile north of Lansing-Haynes. This is an aerial from earlier this year, actually, and it shows the 5,000 square foot house near the center of the property. There's a swimming pool, the, the outbuilding that the applicant had talked about and the small pond out front. The property is about 770 feet deep. And then there's another 400 or 450 feet of property along the eastern property line. The area is zone R1A, single-family residential. And there is R1A, large lot, single-family residential to the north and to the south and east. Again, the applicant, as the applicant stated, the properties to the east and the south, and I highlighted it here in green, are all Green County Park, Parkland. And it is a, a majority of that is the, the Frisbee Golf Course. The properties, and you can see, this is an old range line, this north-south line right here, denoted an old farm line. And all the properties to the east of that are properties that are around the same size as this one and are all zoned A1 agricultural, as part of the Deerbrook Chase subdivision. But they are all A1 properties, but people live on them, just as this applicant here lives on his property that's, that potentially could be A1. The land use plan shows it as low-density residential. We don't have a category on our land use plan for agricultural. So really, I mean, since he plans on staying on the property, living on the property, it's not really large enough to do any kind of commercial agricultural activities or anything like that. The low-density residential is, is the most compatible land use category that we have on our land use plan for what he's looking. What, again, what they're looking to do is change it to A1 uses, which allows agricultural activities. It still allows the one-family dwelling. If he did raise products or anything on the property, he would be allowed to sell those. If you look at the aerial, there's very limited amount of non-wooded area to do anything like that. It does meet the minimum lot size for A1. And this particular property, looking at it, again, you could see, I mean, it's a, it's not an old house. It's not a small house. And it's not surrounded by other farmland that he could potentially buy and turn it into some sort of agricultural business. I mean, he would still live there. So that's why it's staff's feeling that, you know, the, the odds of any kind of large-scale obnoxious agriculture activity on this property is, is low, minimum to low or almost to nil, just because he's got a lot of money invested in the property and he would have to live with whatever activities he does on that, on that land. Staff and Planning Commission both recommend approval of the applicant's request. And again, I'll be here to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. So is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on this application? There is. Come forward. Do I have any written input?
I do, sir. I received an email from Daniel Reeves of 1848 Maple Lane in support of the change to the zoning.
All right. We will close the public hearing. Comments from council? Over here?
I would just like to say that if I were a four or five-year-old child and my dad was trying to get me some chickens and a miniature pony, I would be thrilled. So I think this is great. I'm sorry to hear about all the problems you're having with the disc golf course. Very familiar with disc golf. Those things, you kind of go haywire. But I will support this and I think that's great. And it's, it sounds like a neighbor of yours is also supportive of it. So that's really great to hear on council as well. So thank you for bringing this to us.
Comment?
Yeah. My wife and I have similar age kids, so I completely get the rationale. I think I like the, the idea. I do have two questions coming from the BZA before this, just to kind of dot i's and cross t's. The first one is, has there been any input from the west side of Maple Lane? Because I haven't.
No. And I, I know both the neighbors to the west side. They're brand-new development homes. Actually, the builder, they built my home. I've convinced them to go through them. So I've got a very good relationship with them. They completely understand what we are dealing with on our side, adjacent to the park. So I would, I would not anticipate they would have any issue. Everything we want to do is going to be on the backside of our property. So.
Sure. And I believe it's a six-foot fence.
Yes.
Going around. And you feel that's safe for your family and will do its job?
Sir, from my perspective, I can only do what I can do.
Sure.
I'll, I'll put a six-foot fence up. I'll put signage. Everything else is reactionary, honestly. So, but I, I do, I, I do want to put a black vinyl coated fence on the, the property line on my north neighbor so that they at least are, are seeing that instead of a, you know, a galvanized shank link fence. So, and it'll be anything better than the four-foot box wire weld fence I currently have out there now that I have not taken down yet. So.
Thank you.
Could I just follow up with that with regard to the fence? Is it, either, either one, your intention to put the fence then all the way up to Maple Lane? From the street all the way back? Or is it?
Ideally, yes, on the side. And then we're going to do a, a blocked column wrought iron fence with electric gate in the front of our property, the entrance way. So the, the fence on the park side, because I do have that 18-hole basket that's right up in the corner, they're, they're in there all the time too. So I'm really trying to just get secured.
Okay. And I noticed that you received good comment from the Reeves. Have you talked to the other, the other neighbors to the north?
The Ferguson's, I have not spoken directly to them about it. They don't have the issue with the disc golfers because they're not adjacent to any of the property. But they're, I know them. They would not have an issue, I assume. I mean, I could check if that would make anybody feel better. But they're good people. Good neighbors.
Very good. Thank you.
I do know a couple of people that live there on Maple Lane. I did call them, knowing that this was coming up and asked them what their thoughts were. And they have no problem with it. So that's two others there.
And anyone else? All right. Now, it's a, I mean, it's a beautiful property. There's no, I don't live very far from there, but it's a beautiful property. We cannot condition zoning. So to approve this is just, you're, you know, you're going to do, be able to do whatever you can do on agricultural land. But I would, just for your neighbor's sake, take, at least think twice before you put roosters out there, just to keep your neighbors happy. But obviously, that's not a condition. We can't do that. But it, but no, I think it's fine. It will be good. All right. Do I hear a motion?
A motion to move ordinance 20-04 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 20-04 onto the second reading. Pardon? Okay. 20-11. I know what it says, but we're, it's 20-11. Can you amend that motion, please?
Motion to move ordinance 20-11 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 20-11 onto the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance 20-09.
This is the second reading of an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council enacting a new Chapter 39 income tax to the codified ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. It's hard enough to hear my voice anyway. Without the mask, you wouldn't hear anything. But good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. This is the second reading of the income tax ordinance and the tax code, basically. I just want to go over some of the key points. There's been some discussion on one point that we need to correct in the actual ordinance itself. But a couple of key points here is, again, what's the purpose of the income tax? And that's to provide funds for general municipal operations, maintenance equipment, maintenance service and facilities, infrastructure, and capital improvement. What do you have there is the references to the tax code and the page number if you wanted to take a look at these provisions. But the key component of this is the tax rate itself, and it is 1%. And I thought it was important to discuss real quick that what our charter says about a income tax. And basically, it says, "Council shall have no power to adopt and levy a city income tax without a majority vote." The majority vote of the electors voting on such a levy. So again, what that indicates is that no matter what we do, citywide with the income tax, it has to be taken to the voters for them to pass that and to make any substantial changes to that income tax rate. And the other thing I just wanted to mention too is, is that, so even though the city may or the state may come through with an ORC that would increase that rate, we would still have to go back because of our charter and have that rate adopted by the residents through an election. So just wanted to clarify that. There was some question about that, but we think that charter is pretty clear. And the intent of that charter language was pretty evident. Okay. Again, the next point is, is really kind of the driving point of the goal of the income tax itself too. And that's to diversify the city's revenue base and reduce the dependency on property tax levies now and in the future. Again, when we looked at alternative revenue sources that we've been doing for about 18 months now, this is one of those that surfaced that met all the needs and requirements of diversifying that revenue base and getting folks off of the property tax cycle. Again, the way the ordinance is written itself, the 3.4 mil street levy is set to expire on 12/31/21, would expire if the income tax is adopted. So just wanted to clarify that. Again, one of the key points in here is that the effective rate of this ordinance and the tax code is January 1st, 2022. So we believe that gives us enough time to get the word out. If it were passed by the residents, get the word out, get all the businesses and corporations notified of the upcoming income tax. And therefore, we would have a better success rate, right, when it starts to become adopted. So it does give us a little bit of time to get all that in place. The other key thing here is, I want to emphasize is that in 2016, the ORC, the Ohio devised code drastically changed. revised code drastically changed the landscaping of the income tax. There used to be a lot of different provisions out there that some of the municipalities were, that were grandfathered in, and what they did in 2016 was streamline the entire process. What their goal was is to make it fairly uniformed across all the municipalities. There was complaints about too many variables between cities that were even neighbors, and this was their attempt to consolidate that. So, in essence, what they did was, they brought it down to a level that was consistent among municipalities, but also gave less options and variables for any municipality that was adopting it, or those that had to adopt the 2016 ORC changes. So, again, what we're getting is uniformity, but I just wanted to bring that up because, again, a lot of these provisions you'll see in the tax code itself are right out of the ORC. It's not that we had any variables related to that, so, again, just wanted to go over a couple of the key items in here. The exempt income tax features, that would include all retirement benefits, that includes public, private, 401Ks, annuities, those will all be exempt from the income tax. Social Security benefits, active military pay, intangible income, we've gotten a few questions about that. That's interest, capital gains, dividends, those would all be exempt from the income tax. Alimony and child support received, and, again, unemployment. All of those, in essence, takes an income tax and really kind of makes it an earnings tax, in theory, so... Again, what is taxable? Salaries, qualifying wages, commissions, tips, gratuities, bonuses, and then earned income or earnings that are generated within the city. And, again, that applies to residents and non-residents equally. There's a provision in there about talking about what is a non-resident, and, you know, where everybody is situated, and that dictates, you know, what income tax is paid and to what municipality. So, there was also some issues about under 18, and if they had to pay taxes, again, this was one of the provisions in 2016, the ORC that turned around and said, "You can't have a provision in there that would not tax, not tax 18-year-olds and younger." So, again, we're just following the Ohio revised code. We have to put that in there. I did put this in here, just as a note, that if your tax liability is under less than $10, you don't have a tax liability with the city, so, again, that's $1,000 worth of gross earnings. So, again, the neighbors that cut grass and do some odd jobs along the way, in essence, they may not pay the tax, even though the age limit isn't really in there any longer. The other big thing is, is that the credit paid to another municipality, again, it's 100% credit, so if, again, if the resident works in another city, and the city has a tax rate equal or higher than the 1%, that the city could impose, the residents would not pay income tax to the city of Beaver Creek on those wages. They would get 100% credit for those wages they earned in another municipality. The other thing that we actually did, and this was a variable that we could put in, and therefore, we did it, was saying that this 100% credit that we have in there shall not be changed without the approval of the majority of the electors. So, again, we felt strongly that that needed to be in there, so we actually wrote that right into the ordinance, and, again, we have the flexibility of allowing us to put that provision in there, because it doesn't conflict with any ORC. And just a couple of the quick points, collections at the site, again, because this is an earnings tax, the tax will be required to be collected by the employer as a paycheck deduction. So, again, kind of the ease of collection, the taxpayer, the resident or non-residents don't have to worry about that if it's coming out of their pay, they just have to file a return and take that credit, or, again, show that their employer had taken out the appropriate tax liability. We talked a little bit about confidentiality. Again, all tax returns are confidential. I think Steve went over that in the last meeting, as far as the penalties for that, and that's a pretty serious issue, and everybody in this profession knows that, knows the penalties, and know that it's a major requirement for a income tax provision. And, again, just to let everybody know that there is a local board of tax review. Again, you have a dispute with the ruling about your income tax. You can take it to this local board, which is made up of a couple of residents and a couple of folks appointed by US City Council to hear those cases and rule on those cases. Again, all information is confidential. The other things I wanted to clarify, and this was in, we talked about this at the last meeting, but we had a provision, 39081D, where we had no credit should be given for any county or school district income tax. That was a provision that was put in, and then we realized, too, that this was changed during the 2016 ORC, and, basically, they clarified that municipalities are the only ones that can receive a credit. So, counties and school districts would not receive a credit based on the Ohio Constitution. So, what we're recommending in this version is that we take out that provision and strike that entire 39081D out of that, out of the tax code to be in compliance with the ORC and the Ohio Constitution related to that particular credit. Then, there was some issues that we've heard of, not really issues, but comments that we heard of about the fact that could counsel, because there's some tax levies out there that are continuing, could counsel in the current or in the future reduce those? So, again, if we have a 4.5-mill police levy that is continuing, could city council, during their budget process or during the review of the actual collections, could they turn around and say, "Yes, we'd like to reduce that by a mill, or a half a mill, or something like that, and we checked with the county auditor and the ORC and our city charter, and there's no provisions in there that would not allow us to do that." So, really, in essence, all we'd have to do is contact the county auditor and let them know that for the next upcoming year, we would like to reduce any one of those levies, and it doesn't matter if it's continuing or has a term, you have the authority to do that. We just have to go through the process and contact the county auditor during their timeframe to get that done for the upcoming tax year. So, I just wanted to clarify that. The other thing is that we've spent some time putting together informational pages on the city's website. We have frequently asked questions. We have a income tax calculator to provide the residents with a tool to evaluate how this income tax would affect them with the current tax levies coming off, and those are all available on our website at www.bevercreekohio.gov. And, again, when you go there, it's on the left-hand side, it's pretty bold, it says "income tax," and, again, you go into there, and you can scroll into all of those. The tax calculator is actually pretty nice. It allows you to put in your income, your spouse, or if you have a second job, that income, put in where you live, where you work, I mean, for both of the folks, and then it allows you to put in your current property value, and it will calculate exactly what the effect it would be on if the income tax was adopted. So, I think it's a pretty good tool to give you an idea of how it affects you individually, based on your circumstances. That information is not saved anywhere. As soon as you get out, it's gone, but it does give you the references, too. If you don't know what the assessed value of your property is, then it allows you to reference that and go in there, and you can pull up exactly what the county auditor has as the property value for you. And then we've also set up an email address where you can contact us at incometax@beavercreekohio.gov. If you have any specific questions, we have been getting probably about 12, 15 questions on that already, very good questions, asking about specific things that people are interested in, or just to clarify some of the things that were already in the FAQs or the informational pages. So, it's been very beneficial, and we try to get back to everybody as quickly as we can on those, but that is another avenue for you to get some more additional information related to exactly your situation or questions that you might have about the city and the income tax, or property taxes, or anything related to the revenue generated within the city. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any other questions. I know we've been through this several times, and it's sounding repetitive, but, again, I think it's important to get those points out there, to let everybody know that, you know, what's in this under-page document that establishes the rights and rules and the ORC that we're following to propose this income tax, should it move on in this ordinance form onto the ballot. Again, the ordinance itself, we're looking at that, we're in the second reading, it doesn't automatically put that on the ballot. You actually have to do separate legislation to do that. I think for November, it would have to be July, but we've given you some timelines related to how that would work. But, again, this, right now, just adopts the ordinance, and the tax code doesn't put it on the ballot. That's later legislation. So, be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just for clarity, if you don't mind, the... We don't need to do it until after our public input, but to eliminate the language of 39.081, do we need a motion to do that, to take it out?
Yes, Mayor, I heard the microphone on, yes.
All right, and this reading, this here, this second reading is appropriate time to do that?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions of Bill?
I do have one quick question, and I think I know the answer to it, but I just want to be sure. Were to reduce the continuing levies that are out there, as you said, we could do that in order to, they couldn't be put back on by council, they'd have to be voted back on, correct?
That's right, they would be have to be voted on...
They would go back up to their level without council, without public voting.
Yes, it couldn't go any higher than the voted mileage that was adopted by the electors. So, again, if you have a 1-mill, and you reduce it to a half-mill, you can take it back up to the 1-mill, but you can't exceed that 1-mill. So, if you went to 1 1/4, then have to go back to the electors to have them vote on that, just like any additional levy.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Bill?
Question, Mayor, please. Mr. President, what's this?
Add us to that Supreme Court decision where the Ohio Municipal League was challenging the state's ability to be able to collect municipal income tax. What would you, can you fill us in on that? Maybe I...
What I understand is, is it's still ongoing right now?
All right.
Again, it appears like the issue is that who collects that, the income tax for that municipality, and, again, the state, when they decide to bring that in-house, causes some additional fees, and that's, in essence, what it is, is it's basically a home rule issue related to, it's our income tax, we want to collect it, we don't want to go through a central point to have somebody collect it and then send it back to us. Again, it eliminates kind of the audit capabilities, and although it might streamline the payment process, I think the municipalities feel that it's deteriorating their home rule authority.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mayor, and, you know, again, I don't, I follow it just as a sidelight, but I'm sure the mayors talk about that at your mayors' and managers' meeting, that I think it's still actively going on.
Yeah, it's behind the scenes, but, yeah, it's...
With everything else going on, that, you're right, it probably is...
I haven't seen a final decision on that. The case is still pending, and I can certainly bring a little summary of counsel's interest in that, but, you know, it relates to the businesses, how the tax is collected, or who collects it.
Anyone else? All right, this is the second reading. We voted last, at the last meeting, to make this a three-reading ordinance, so this is the second reading. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address counsel on this ordinance? If there is, please come forward, give us a name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes, or get somebody to donate up to six more.
Carroll, this is 1423 Town Hall. Again, we're talking an ordinance here. An ordinance is just that, changeable by the city council at any time. So, the 1% tax credit, if that's not in the city charter, it's meaningless. You can change it. Put it in the city charter. I want to see what the charter language is going to be. I want to see what the charter language is going to be. The second thing is, I brought up last time, let's put a cap on what we can use income tax for. The only thing I heard was, hey, the state puts a 10 1/2% cap on public indebtedness. Does anybody know what that is applied to? How many people up here know? What do I apply the 10 1/2% to, to come up with a number? Anybody? I know you're not supposed to answer questions. For Beaver Creek, it's going to be $130 million of debt. Now, if you want to know why we want a cap, think $130 million. It's based on the total appraised value of the community, okay? So, this joke we had about the 10 1/2% last week, nobody could tell me what the cap was. $130 million. As an example, why don't we just say a 2-mill cap? As time goes on, property value goes up, so we're going to get more. Say if a mill brings in $1,000 and $1,500. Two mills, and this is just an example, would say, "I could have a $3 million a year debt paid off by the city income tax." Not $130 million. Let's get realistic, okay? Why didn't somebody up here say that was going to be $130 million? I don't know, don't know. But also in the ordinance, I mean, also in the charter, let's put in there that we can vote on any increase. The way it reads right now, and I tried to see if I can get it up here again, it says it shall have, I lost it. Anyway, think about the income tax. You can't levy. That once you pass it, it's a little bit unclear. Put four words in there. Make it clear for the public. I'll use another example. The city council salary. Somebody asked me a month ago, "What's the salary for city council?" I went to the city charter. It's $2,000. It's $2,000. We passed ordinances to increase it, but we haven't amended the city charter. So, it's confusing. Let's make it clear. Right now, I'll vote against this income tax for two reasons. You won't put a cap on it, other than $130 million, which is absurd. You won't put in the city charter that you won't change the payback, whatever it is, the 1%. Put it in there, lock it in. If it's in the charter, you can't change it. If it's in the ordinance, you can change it anytime you want. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight like to address counsel on this ordinance? Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tony Corvo, 432 Ashland Court, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45434. I want to address this to all the grandpas and grandmas in the audience and in the city. The pro-tax, pro-tax crowd, and also some of you, and also some of the senior citizens have opined that they can't afford the property tax. Retirement income is not taxed, isn't that great? Grandma and grandpa don't have to be out in the street, and, of course, what that does is transfers the tax burden to the younger people. The myth of grandma and grandpa can't afford the income tax is a myth. The myth is not that they're on fixed income. The myth is that they have no wealth. In truth, the over-65 crowd, 38% are millionaires. A great many of them are worth over a half-million dollars. The under-35 crowd is often have negative wealth. You know why? Because they're starting a family, they're trying to buy a house, they're trying to pay off student loans, and what grandma and grandpa is doing, when they say, "I can't afford the income tax," I'm sorry, the property tax, is they're transferring the wealth to people who could at least really afford it. Now, the issue here is not that the property taxes are better than the income taxes and so forth. The issue is, in a free country, everybody must bear a tax burden. No one should fluff off their responsibility to somebody else, least of which, the rich, off to the people who are struggling to start out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight like to address counsel? Come on up. Come on up.
Counsel, my name is John Stankowski. I live at 1497 Fudge Drive. That's up the street from the high school. So I've been in Beaver Creek for 20 years, and we came here when it was the big school fiasco, the Taj Mahal and all that. That's when I got involved, actually, in politics. And then I've seen this levy proposal for income tax been brought up over the years. Of course, my friends are older like myself, and they say, how many times do I have to bring this up? We keep voting it down. And I says, I don't know. So I went to, we just happened to hear about it two days ago, yesterday, and I sent out a quick email to everyone I could think of about the meeting, and I didn't realize there's a calculator on the website that talked about how to do this, so we went to the county website ourselves to make things easy. Let's say I make $100,000, close to that. I worked at Wright Patterson, and we went in and we looked at all the municipality taxes we pay for, based on the $100,000. And right now, we are paying $611. So I thought, okay, if this levy, reducing the road levy by 3.4, whatever that is, I'm still going to have to pay almost $400 more for this income tax levy versus what I'm paying for my municipality fees. The school board gets $1,938 of that, so that's a whole nother issue, I know, but so that, you know, my money is going out quickly. So for me to vote yes for this proposal would make me actually pay out another $400. I have an elderly mother that lives on Edenwood. We have property on another address in Beaver Creek that we're going to be building a larger newer house on, and eventually, you know, my taxes will be reduced when I get that retirement age income. But as the gentleman right before me said, it's not fair to those who are bringing in incomes or that had a good income and then burden our children. We have a daughter that lives on Cold Springs, and they struggle. And so all of this income tax, I'm afraid it's going to be voted down again. I hope it is voted down because it's going to cost me money, but I just wanted to bring that up to you, that I have gone to the website, I've calculated it, so for me to do it, it's going to cost me more money. Even if the levy paid for all the municipalities, I'd still be paying out more because of my income tax withdrawal, 1% versus what I'm currently paying. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council this evening?
Dr. Mark Walsh, 434 Ramsgate Drive, and again, I'm here to support the income tax levy. My motivation is anger, anger that we are giving tens of millions of dollars earned in Beaver Creek by people outside of Beaver Creek who come to work here, and we give it back to the communities of Kettering, Centerville, and Dayton, tens of millions of dollars every year. At the same time, we have many funding needs here, both in the city. The city has, I think, 18 voted mills. There's basically 14 effective mills on property. Centerville's tax rate for their city government is 2.5 mills. So our city is into property tax, and this is hurting the schools. Also, you know, as we know, as the schools go, so does the community, and I think Beaver Creek could slowly slide down if the schools keep having trouble raising money. But again, my main motivation is the fiscal insanity, and I'm sorry to be dramatic, of giving this money to Centerville and Kettering and Dayton when we need it here. And for those people who are opposed to an income tax, it is being taxed, whether you like an income tax or not. It's being taxed by Kettering, Centerville, and Dayton, and they're getting the money. And unless we do this, we are going to continue to lose $10 to $20 million a year for forever, while our streets and schools gradually deteriorate.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else tonight that'd like to address council?
I get a chance to breathe here.
Now, there you go.
Suffering there. Brian Jarvis, 185 Timberwood Drive in Beaver Creek. Mayor Stone, Vice Mayor Adams, members of council, thank you for giving us the chance to talk about this 1% income tax. Beaver Creek residents are facing the prospects of having city property taxes increased to unsustainable levels. We currently have the fourth highest city property tax rate of any city in Montgomery or Greene Counties, and with Beaver Creek's high property valuations, this results in a high city property taxes that many do complain about, second only to the city of Oakwood in this area. Over the past 10 years, our city property taxable millage has increased by over 60%. That's incredible. At the current rate, from what was proposed at the January work session for future property taxes, it's going to increase another 60% in the next four years. That is going to, and that's on every homeowner and property in the city of Beaver Creek. We will then have the highest city property tax rate of any city in Montgomery or Greene Counties. 242 of the 246 cities in Ohio understand this idea of spreading the cost of public services among the broadest number of people helps you keep taxes down for your residents. 15 of the 17 cities in Montgomery and Greene Counties understand the same thing. Currently, as was said, the city of Beaver Creek levies 14.93 taxable mills of property taxes for city services. That's about $475 per $100,000 of home value. With the current method of only property taxation, if things go as proposed at that January work session, it's going to be an increase of $318 for every $100,000 of taxable value, and then about one mill more about every other year going forward, $35 more every year, all that paid for by local property owners and passed on to renters in the case of rental property. With a 1% income tax, that 14.93 mills of property taxes will be reduced by just over three mills. That's a reduction of $101 per $100,000 of home value, a 21% reduction in city property taxes, a 3.5% reduction in overall taxes. Why does this work better for Beaver Creek residents? Because for the first time in the city's history, funding for local services, police, streets, parks, infrastructure, and others, will be fairly shared by non-residents who work here. This current method of funding in Beaver Creek is not sustainable because it doesn't require everyone who uses services, police, streets, and parks, to pay for them. Only property owners do here, and that's a heavy burden on local property owners. Interestingly, most non-residents who work in Beaver Creek wouldn't see higher taxes with this because their cities give them 100% tax credit, most of them do, and our 1% is lower or equal to most other cities in this area. With this 1% tax, Beaver Creek community will benefit. Our total resident share will be reduced from 100% to 66% funding of services. Non-resident shares will rise from 0 to 34. Times change, it's imperative that we change with it. This is why you must find a way to fund Beaver Creek going forward.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you so much. Vice Mayor, thank you. Council, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to address council tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but...
Don't forget your three minutes.
I need to counter quickly to Mr. Stankowski. He may not have heard. I'm one of those...
Oh, get her a name and address, please.
Mary Brayley, 1399 Town Hall Road, Beaver Creek.
Thank you.
I'm one of the senior citizens, grandma and grandpas, that are, grandmas rather, that's about to be taxed out of her house. I now pay 75% of my fixed income on property taxes. That's gone up almost $1,000 in the last, what, eight or 10 years here, and I can't afford to keep having those next ones. Where I live, from my, from my property, I have 13 houses I can see. Nine of those houses are owned by senior citizens, retired senior citizens on fixed income. As far as I know, none of those are multimillionaires. Some of those houses have been sold in the last five or so years and are now becoming rentals, which to me begins to deteriorate our neighborhood from folks like me who have lived in our area for 40-plus years, three of the other, of those nine have. So that's the other side of the senior citizen piece of this. Thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
I've got a written copy of my testimony here. I'm going to leave this with you. If anybody has any questions or comments or if they disagree with me, I invite you to call me and talk about it.
All right.
My name is John Mitchell, 3955 Maple Grove Lane. In a Facebook post, separate from the Beaver Creek Fair Funding Committee, Mr. Jarvis reminded us that Beaver Creek, despite being one of the few remaining Ohio municipalities without an income tax, has one of the lowest unemployment rates of any Ohio city at 3.1% at the end of 2019. The rest of Ohio had 4.2% unemployment, about 20% above the national average of 3.5%. We can't say how much a zero-income tax had to do with our low unemployment rate, but for sure, lower taxes are a draw for business as well as highly-trained productive employees. Mr. Jarvis, and his commission said, also said that the tax would reduce some residents' property taxes and reduce reliance on property taxes, but failed to address if residents' total tax burden would decrease, if at all. The BFFC claims it would take 100 years to complete infrastructure upgrades and capital projects without the income tax. If nothing else, that doesn't speak well for Beaver Creek city government planning since we became a city in 1980. Case in point, the Beaver Creek Golf Course, by the way, had the final, but the final annual payment is $100,845,000. That goes away on February 1st. I asked council the cost of the golf course, and they answered back, since 2004, the revenues were approximately $43.4 million and expenditures approximately $44.3 million. That's a loss of a mere $900,000 over that time, but that does not include the debt service of over $13 million. I also asked Mr. Casera how much revenue would be gained from the proposed income tax. His response, $14.4 million the first year of collection in 2022, and it would increase incrementally until full collection in 2024. That said, 4.64 million would be lost if the 3.4-mill levy expires in December 2021. That's a $10 million annual net windfall with no limit on actual increases, depending on the state of the economy, not to mention minimum accountability for where that money would be spent. And that's not to mention another $845,000 that comes into the city treasury in 2023. Despite being retired and not subject to the income tax, for these reasons and others, I strongly oppose the proposed 1% income tax. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Vanessa Stankowski. I'm at 1497 Fudge Drive, and I appreciate the opportunity to sit in on this meeting tonight and to hear both sides. Definitely taking that all to heart in how I feel about this. Retirement's right around the corner for us. That would be really easy to say, gosh, you won't have to be responsible for any of this. And I hear both of these brothers are right, men right here, sorry. And I just have to say that in looking at my property taxes, the municipality is such a small percent that truly, you know, it doesn't cover the school costs. That can't be covered under the city tax. That would be wonderful if it could cover some of that, but that's not going to decrease our schooling costs or help our schools in that manner. So to look at it from a taxpaying citizen at this time, it definitely increases ours quite a bit to go up, so I just, I worry about those who are paying taxes that it would be doing the same thing for them as well. Again, for us, retirement's right around the corner. That benefit of not having retirement tax, that's a wonderful thing, you know, it's checks and balances, you know, which is the better side. So anyway, just wanted to bring that up because I felt like there was a little bit of confusion with some of our taxpayers that are looking at their property taxes as a whole and thinking that this is going to make a big chunk of difference out of them. And it really, municipality is truly, if you go to your county auditor site and look at your property taxes, the municipality taxes are really such a small percentage of our property taxes that I think we just need to take that into consideration as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Good evening, Mayor Stone, members of council.
Good evening.
I appreciate the leadership you have shown in the council's...
Here's a name there, first place.
2428 Brown Bark Drive. Start my time over, please. I appreciate your leadership and council's willingness to extend this topic to three readings and three public input sessions. That's critically important. I'm glasses. So there's a very subtle approach to the way this is coming about because, but I'm concerned that there is not a definition of complete at this point in time.
I didn't hear that word. Definition of what?
Complete.
Thank you.
I also appreciate Mr. Walsh's comments on school financing because the school-city income tax is a fair and equitable way to raise money for a public purpose. So our community has always been strong in trying to maintain our powers over the public purse. We've always supported levies with fixed purpose, and we always supported the charter to protect that right. We would always love for project allocation to be severity first and matching, federal matching second, but we know that's not the case in Beaver Creek under the current status. So how did we get here? So let's go down memory lane, and I know a few of you remember this. So in '06, the property tax was a 100% dollar-for-dollar property tax rollback. That really reduces our burden in Beaver Creek, but it had no spending restrictions, so it didn't equal the levy power, so it was voted down. In '12, to defray the costs of the one mill, the 3.7 police levy, the first one mill on the street, 2.6-mill street levy, those now are all continuous, but at that time, if the income tax met the allocations needed and the 20% capital fund improvement fund was funded, the property taxes would start be abated on equal amounts. Again, that's still a better situation and a tax burden reduction for everybody. Anything left was going to be left to the budgetary process, and we would always hope that that would never be a windfall as we've seen in the past. So if we agree on the 14 million, and I'm, thank you for bringing that back up, minus the 3.4-mill on the current street levy, that's $10 million a year. This ordinance puts no restrictions on it. There's nothing in the charter to protect our rights. This is an absolute windfall with no guaranteed reduction of the current property taxes because all of the existing ones that were in place before two years ago are now continuous. And what about construction of a new city hall? That's likely a bond issue, but no guarantee for funding to pay that bond issue has been discussed. Will that be an income tax or will that be a traditional levy to pay that bond? So one of the things that always surprises me, oh, I'll wrap it up. So I think with these points, it is clear there is a considerable of work, considerable amount of work left before this income tax ordinance should be passed in Beaver Creek. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who's next?
Carol Graff, 1442 Devote Drive, 54-year resident of Beaver Creek, former council member and mayor. At one time, I worked in Fairborn. I paid my 1% to Fairborn for the mile road and the police protection that they provided. I was very happy to do so. I think that people who live in other places and work here should provide that same reciprocity for the city of Beaver Creek. Our city services need additional revenue. As I walk for my exercise these days, I see grass growing in the street. I know that's going to ruin the roads that I walk on. If you're not earning, you will not pay an earnings tax, but if you're not earning, you will pay property taxes one way or the other. Most residents who work, who are non-residents who are working here already pay a municipal income tax and will not cost them... income tax and will not cost them a penny. For those of us who are senior citizens, and perhaps have earned the right to hopefully breathe, we won't pay an earnings tax. The diversity of income with the probability of increasing city revenue would provide the services that we need, pay for the services that we need to increase, and the cost of increasing services. And I don't know what kind of distrust other people have. I trust my city council. I trust them to provide the services that we pay for and provide them well. I implore all council members to support the earnings tax issue that will benefit most of the residents of Beaver Creek and will be, provide for the long-term health of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight who would like to address council? Anyone at all? All right, we will close the public hearing. Oh, please come on up.
Hi, my name is Joseph Marks. I live at 3647 Eastern Drive. I am probably among the younger adult working members of this community. I currently live with my parents. It's their property, because I can't afford to actually live and own property in Beaver Creek myself. And I work in Dayton. So, when I paid my taxes last year, all of my, all of my taxed income went to the city of Dayton. No actual taxed income went to Beaver Creek at all, even though I live here, I went to school here. And this is, I want to be able to contribute some of my income and some of my money to support this community that my parents and I benefit from. So, I believe that we should have this income tax. Even if it's going to raise what I have to pay, it's going to the community that I live and benefit from all the same. So, that's my stance on the matter.
Well, thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, this time we will close the public hearing. Thank you. Before we move on, let's, let's consider a motion to remove Section 39.081D. I have a motion and a second to remove from the ordinance Section 39.081D. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, this will naturally move on to the third reading, but that doesn't preclude us from having comments. If anybody has any they want to make, please do so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to thank everyone that came out to talk about this today. This is obviously a very polarizing issue, and I appreciate hearing from multiple different perspectives. As you can tell, we have people of different age groups who are on either side of the argument. So, I think the conversation is really great, and I appreciate hearing everything. The one thing I will say again, that this upcoming vote at the third reading is only, again, as Mr. Casera said, on the text of the ordinance itself. It is not going to be a vote whether or not we put this on the upcoming ballot. So, there will be a public input again, correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For the third reading?
Yes.
So, I, again, encourage you, if you'd like to come out again, but just know that vote that night will only be on the text of the ordinance itself. There will be a whole nother set of three readings and set of discussions that we, I'm sorry.
No, that's a resolution.
Resolution. There will be a whole nother discussion portion on the resolution, thank you for correcting me, where we will then talk about whether or not it'll go on the ballot. So, I know that that still causes some confusion, so I wanted to just kind of make that clear. And again, just thank everyone for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment?
I have a few things to say, Mayor. I echo your comments, Councilwoman Garcia. Thank you for coming out tonight. I appreciate hearing all of your perspectives. Each and every one of you raised very valid points for us to consider. I want to encourage all of those who are watching at home also to continue to do research and understand the issues, reach out to us, and let us know what your comments are, because we really will take them to heart. I think that there's been a lot of fantastic thought and consideration put into the ordinance language for the tax code, and I want to thank the city staff for doing that. I think we've gotten the most out of the exemptions that are possible, and I think that the language is as easy to understand as possible for a tax code language. And again, this is just the initial step. There will be many more times to talk about it. I wanted to say these things, because at the next council meeting, I'm not going to be in town, so I wanted to make sure that my opinions were public, so that everyone kind of understood where I was coming from. I think that the earnings tax is a fair way to fund local government operations. I do think it will remove the tax burden from property owners who are tasked with funding all of our operational needs, and I believe that non-residents who are working in town should pay their fair share. Like all appropriations and budgets from the past, public participation and input is critical. I think Ms. Graff talked about trust versus mistrust, and I will work hard to gain your trust and go through those appropriation budgets and listen to you, so that, that money that we're gaining from a prospective income tax is spent wisely. All right? We have big city issues and infrastructure problems that will just be a burden on our property tax owners if, if we don't find alternate sources of revenue. Our property taxes are high, and they are indeed, in my opinion, forcing some people to make choices on whether they live in Beaver Creek or not. And as I said last meeting, I want to urge everyone to read the tax documents, understand the facts, and ask a lot of questions. And nobody likes paying taxes, including me, but for the prosperity of our city, I will gladly pay my fair share, and I'm happy to make this investment in our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. First, Mr. McHugh, could you answer a question for us? Can you please explain the difference between the charter language and an ordinance? What is the difference between the two, or what exactly does an ordinance do that perhaps maybe the charter doesn't?
Well, the charter, the charter and all provisions of that, maybe move this closer, I said that. Are all voted on by the public, so, you know, every city has the right to be a charter city. You can be a statutory city, you can be a charter city, but Beaver Creek chose, as an incorporation, to have be a charter city, to vote on a charter. And there have been changes periodically, but all those changes and everything in the charter have, at one time or another, been approved by a majority of the electors. Whereas, the ordinance is not something voted on by the public. An ordinance is voted on in the majority of council, with a few exceptions. There are certain super majorities required or emergencies, but as a whole, ordinances are approved by a majority of council and can be modified. Now, one of the things, though, in this particular situation is that, you know, with respect to the 1%, the charter is very clear, in my opinion, that council, that has been the whole reason that this, this city has never, just by council, enacted a 1% income tax, because the Ohio Revised Code would allow council, any city council, to enact a 1% income tax code, up to 1%. And with that, a tax code. But because of the charter, it's very clear that, at the foundation or founding of the city of Beaver Creek, it was a definite decision made that, that any income tax would require. It's also very clear in the Ohio Revised Code, it is where the charter and the Ohio Revised Code sort of merge, because any income tax above the 1%, which without, without a charter provision could be enacted, has to be voted on. So, and while there's been discussions, the Ohio Revised Code might be changed, it might be, but I think legally, any change in that, if they raise it to 1.5%, still, it's going to be prospective and not retroactive. And per our charter, would still kick in, and you're got to vote on it. So, I don't know if that addressed your question, but...
It does, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The one thing that I did want to say, and it's just kind of to echo Councilwoman Garcia, is that this is just voting on the language. We are just looking at the tax code language, and it's kind of been explained to us over the past few meetings, is that language is pretty much declared, for the most part, by the state. We have a little bit of leeway, a little bit of wiggle room, and I think we've exercised that wiggle room to the best extent possible, in the best way that we can benefit our citizens. Now, the thing to remember, and the thing that I ask for input on as well, is if there's something in this language, please reach out to us, let us know, let us talk through those. We're more than willing to listen and try to fix things to help better the community, or to see things that maybe perhaps everyone, we're blinded by, because we're so close to it. And additionally, we have not decided for sure whether or not this is going on the November ballot. And so, that's also something that we are requesting input on, or at least I am requesting input on. I'll speak for myself on this one. If this is something you want to see on a general election ballot, this is putting out to the voters. This is for the people to decide. All we are saying is, we're going to put it out to you and let you make the decisions on what you think is best for your community, and what you think is the best way to spend your taxpayer dollars. So, let us know what you think of when you wanted to see this. Is November okay, or would you prefer to see it next year, so we could get a little bit more information, a little bit more literature out to the people? That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I would just like to add to our legal council's points, and that is that anything that we think should be in the charter, we can do right alongside of this. It doesn't have to be, so it can, you know, we can propose to the people to vote on a charter change at any time we want, and then, of course, the Charter Commission will make those recommendations also up and down the road. All right, anyone else?
I would echo Councilmember Garcia's. Thanks to everyone. Appreciate all the input, even online as well, Nextdoor, Facebook, et cetera. Thank you all for, for giving us that information. To reiterate where I stand, I voted against the last tax levy, but in running for, for council and sitting here today, we, we do have some challenges as a city. The city manager did a great job through the tornado, and if there are other events like that, there are challenges. There are some $200 million in terms of infrastructure spending that's potentially necessary in the future. We get regular emails on curbs and roads and other things. Those are challenges that will come down the line. And so, I am concerned if we don't put this on the ballot, to echo Councilmember Schwartz, that at least people have a, have a decision. But I do have a philosophy of keeping taxes low, and I have concerns about changing taxes. My other concern is on the national economy, unemployment, just in terms of timing, there are, this is an unanswerable question, but what a tax, an income tax would do to business owners. We don't know that in the forthcoming year, two years, so I do raise the, the issue of , of timing. I look forward to other comments. Please reach out to me. Love to hear your, your sentiments. And again, I echo the comments, these, this is just to set the language at this stage. So, please continue this, this very vigorous debate. Thank you for that.
All right. Who's next?
Yeah, thank you all for coming. I, we really appreciate you coming out and speaking with us and giving us your opinion on this. Going back to something, I was here back in the beginning when Beaver Creek first became a city. And at the time, when all of this was done, we had no idea that we'd end up to be the city that we are. I think any of us that were around back then really could never imagine what's happened here. I've been talking a lot to a lot of people outside of this, that are on both sides of the issue. I've been talking to several people that have problems with the streets that were, was brought up by Councilman Doer, that are falling apart, that we just can't get to because it's not in this budget. So, we have to find a way to address these needs, because those needs are going to become greater and greater as we go forward. There's nothing worse than backing out of your driveway and dropping into a hole, because we can't fix the street. So, I encourage you to, to continue to talk with us. I'm open to, to listen to everybody. I want your input, I want your, your ideas. We do have to, you know, this, this is my city. I ran for office just to work for this city. I have no desire to go beyond this city. This, I want to do what I can to help this city. And keeping everybody safe and keeping it a desirable city to live in goes right along with that. So, again, please continue to talk with us and keep us up to date on what your ideas are. Thank you.
All right. Well, I did notice tonight that it's, it's very refreshing to see all the homework, the people doing the research on the levies at the county site, and the thing that's going to, one of the things that's going to be the hardest to get across to the general public. And if you can go back and look at history, when we have a levy, it's a fixed amount of dollars. So, periodically, we come back and say, "We need a half mil increase, or a 1 mil increase for police, a half mil or a 1 mil increase for roads." Those will continue, if the, if the income tax does not take effect, those additional requests will be coming. So, it's not just the 3.4 mils of potential savings that is on the surface. The, we, if we only have revenue from property tax, then we will most likely be coming back for more property tax increases. So, please keep that in mind, that it could be as much as five or six more mils on top of that three, that we would not be requesting down, well, over the next three or four years, if that we have an income tax. And that's going to be a hard thing to understand, but by the same token, we can't, it's the people. The people have to vote on a property tax. So, if, if for some reason, some future council is crazy enough to ask for another property tax after getting an income tax, then I would be on the bandwagon to start fighting that, because that's just not the route to go. But I just wanted to express that. I know you all are doing your homework, so I want you to consider that as well in your, in your process. There will be, I'm sure, numerous, if this is approved at the third reading, there will be numerous outreach areas and meetings for people to come to and learn and listen. And so, with that said, we will allow this to move on to the third reading, which will be our next regular scheduled meeting. I believe that is the 22nd. Is that correct? It'll be the 22nd. So, we will allow public input at that meeting as well. We're trying to get as much public input as we can, and we're doing, being very liberal with the public hearings on this ordinance. And so, we look forward to seeing you again, and hopefully, we won't have to sit six feet apart by then, maybe. Well, I doubt it, but you never know. All right. Any, if there's nothing else, we allow Ordinance 20-09 to move on to the third reading. Next, Ordinance 20-08.
This is the second reading of an ordinance to change the name of a section of Shaker Town Road to Old Shaker Town Road.
Okay, who is, there we go. Mr. Thonero. I can't recognize people with a mask on.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of City Council, happy to be for you again this evening. This is a second reading renaming Shaker Town Road. There was, as part of that project, a small section of the roadway that remained that does require a renaming. We've gone through the first reading, now we're to the second reading, and we're asking to rename that small T-shaped section of Shaker Town Road, Old Shaker Town Road. As I indicated in the last meeting, we did send out notice to the three property owners, and we have not heard any additional information back on that.
Thank you.
I'm going to answer any questions you may have this evening.
All right, are there any questions? This is the second reading, which there's been some confusion, but, so we will allow public input, if anybody has any, any input on this ordinance. Seeing none, we will move on. Do I have a motion?
It's it.
Pardon? Was that sponsored by?
Councilmember Kern.
Councilmember Kern, okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 20- I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 20-08. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is council time. Councilmember Kern, would you like to start?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's really, again, I didn't say anything a few minutes ago, but again, a special appreciation for the citizens that spoke tonight and gave us their opinions and a variety of things. And also, I appreciated by follow council members' thoughts and ideas that have to be taken into consideration in this issue of the income tax that we're discussing at the present time. But I really thank everybody for their input.
Okay. Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have a few things I wanted to discuss this week, or last week, actually. I attended the Beaver Creek Wetlands Annual Meeting. As many of you may not be aware, some of the Beaver Creek Wetlands are actually owned partially by the city, partially by Green County, and then privately owned. And what I was very excited to hear is that there is a plan in place to hopefully connect most of the wetlands together in about a 20-mile trail. So it would kind of make all of them connected instead of having to jump from each different location by car, which for me, I'm a big hiker. My family and I go out hiking a good bit, and I thought that that was a great addition that they will be working on. So I wanted to share that with the community. Next, I wanted to recognize Mr. Jarvis. I'm not sure if he's still here. Yes, he is. I'm not sure if everyone had saw, but he was recognized by the Greater Dayton Association of Black Journalists this week for a lot of the work that he's done in the community and getting his voice out. So I wanted to recognize him for that. And last, but certainly not least, I wanted to echo some of the sentiments that Mayor mentioned this, at the beginning of this meeting. Our community and our country is in a really trying time right now. And I'm not going to pretend like I have all of the answers, but I will listen, and I'm here to learn and to educate myself and to educate the community as best as possible as one of your representatives. So please don't hesitate to reach out to me, and I'm more than happy to listen and advocate for any change that I think needs to be implemented. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes, thank you. I attended the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission meeting late last week, and one of the topics that we discussed was the updates to the public participation policy. So much like City Council, MDRPC does have an open policy where they want people to come in and give their remarks. Part of their statements is that for any idea or any project to proceed, it needs good input. And I think tonight is, again, just a good example for all the residents we had here talking about one of the projects that we're discussing. So, you know, feel free to peruse the MDRPC website. With everything going on with COVID, they did heavily take a look at promoting a virtual open house, giving public a chance to review documents and provide feedback. So our, MDRPC is continuing to find ways to make sure we can garner public output and public opinion. So I think that's great. And I would be remiss not to mention, the Ohio Association of the Chief of Police Community Relations and Engagement Committee has named the Beaver Creek Police Department the Agency of the Month for June 2020. And a statement directly from this organization says, "Congratulations to the Beaver Creek Police Department for their tremendous effort in sharing positive community policing programs throughout their community. They have clearly outlined the variety of ways that they work to sustain ongoing programs, education, and safety alike." They have a great picture of their officer Brown in the picture that they had on their website, but I think it's just a, you know, a great mark to our community that we do have this policing and education that we have, and Mark Brown has done a great job as our community outreach officer, as well as Chief Evers and the entire department. So congratulations on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome Burlap and Birch to Beaver Creek as the newest small business located at the Fearful Commons Mall. So welcome to the city. Want to reiterate some of the statements earlier, just in terms of small businesses, to reach out to us, to ask us questions. If there's anything we can do to help, please do not hesitate to ask. Please reach out. We're always willing to chat. And with what's happening in our country and in the wider world, please reach out. Let's chat. I want to learn more, and we look forward to that. Second, I'd like to thank some of our neighboring communities that were so helpful during the tornado and in recent days as well. I want to say thank you to those that have really stepped up to come into Beaver Creek and to help as well. So I'm really thankful there.
Thank you. Councilmember Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. The last couple of weeks have, we've had some great weather, and so my family and I have been out visiting a number of parks in the city. I know that the city is currently working on plans to try and reopen playgrounds in the most appropriate way possible. I will tell you, we've carried a lot of hand sanitizer with us, and we've, I've tried to keep my kids off of the structures as much as possible, but we've got some fantastic parks in the city, and I just want to encourage everybody to get out, enjoy the sunshine, and enjoy the summer. And that's all I've got tonight.
Thank you.
You are looking dirty tanned.
Thank you.
And even more so when you get back from vacation.
Yes, indeed.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo what Councilwoman Garcia said about the police department, the award they got in June. Also know that they've just finished the Kalia inspection. I don't know what the results on that will be, but I'm sure they'll get the gold standard again because it's a, it's a well-run police department, and a lot of the, I guess the recognition should go to the guy in charge, and all the guys that worked for him. We were really fortunate to have that department here. And also, in speaking about Officer Brown, I was able to go with him to a preschool earlier this week and show some of the cars and take the little robot car around. These kids had all kinds of good questions. They really want to know about what police officers do, what they, it's really nice to go and talk to them. And it, I think from that standpoint, it just gives them a better understanding of what and who police officers are. They're people, just like everybody else. They have families, and they, most of our officers do live in our community. The other thing I wanted to bring up is with things opening up again, all of our restaurants are opening up in the city. Please go out and visit with them, buy some food, do whatever you can. I know my son is a small business owner. He owns a restaurant and two daycare centers in Indiana, and he struggled through this whole thing, and I know these guys are struggling. So whatever we can do to go out and help them through what they've been through would certainly be appreciated. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right. Well, I think I agree with all the comments made. I mean, it's a, in my statement that I read on behalf of council, it wasn't just a personal view earlier on, it was on behalf of council. They all, everybody had a little bit of an input into that, and I appreciate that very much. But that's pretty much, you know, we do have challenges in the country, and, you know, we're going to face the unemployment and the businesses trying to come back here and everything else. But, you know, communication is the key word, and we, the public's got to communicate with us if they have questions. We, we're probably as much of an open book as any government that I know of. I mean, you ask, and there'll be an answer found. I mean, it's, just come in or give us a call. We are, we are very accessible and open, so don't hesitate at all to do that. That being said, I will turn, say again, thanks for everybody for coming tonight, but we'll turn it over to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a real quick update on a couple of things. Shakertown Road project to start with. The contractor is planning to pave Alpha-Belbrook Road the week of June 8th and 15th, following that work items like the final pavement, and the guardrails are planned to follow shortly after that. It's anticipated to have Alpha-Belbrook Road open to traffic on or before June 19th, so many people will be glad of that. Although around there, still a lot of work to be done by the state. As mentioned, you know, this is probably updated, not updated by now, probably just the governor made any more announcements today, how quickly things can, can change. But we are facing some challenges with, you know, the reopening of many things. We'll have more bathrooms open as well. I'm not going to read through all these, but, you know, with the, I will say, the biggest challenge is just like this. Hey, we can have a council meeting, but look how we're having it. It's very difficult. So certain things of opening parks or opening this or that come with challenges that may not be practical or affordable or even possible to open with, although you can open. A lot of it's just dealing with the social distancing or having the appropriate staff to be able to clean items and so much. If you just, you can't do it, you can't do it at times. And so, but we ask for patience. If you have any questions, please contact our Parks Department at any time at the 427-5514. Be more than glad to go through any of the questions because I know the dates of things opening seem to, you know, be many dates out there, and that's very confusing. And as well as so many rules and restrictions to what goes along with what type of thing it is. So just feel free to contact us, and we'll help clarify that. On with parks and recreation. Tuesday, June 9th, the senior center of transportation will be available. So we're going to make that only, the rides only at this point in time to medical appointments. Please contact the senior center at 426-6166. So that's good. The seniors have been, still aren't able to gather together yet. That is one of the institutions that the governor and Dr. Amy Acton have not released. I think there's a crack in that a little bit with, I heard this week, what was it, today with visiting outside with certain long-term care, certain types of, you know, facilities like that. So that's a beginning. But as far as our senior center, we're still not able to open that up to the seniors. And I know, but although our staff is back and doing the transportation, we're looking at the weight room as well, or the exercise room, ways that we may be able to do that. And of course, we're looking at the online programming to help and definitely calling the seniors, checking up on them, all those things, activities, that, trying to help every way we can. I know the seniors have expressed they cannot wait to get back together. That is for sure, which is great. Some recreational classes will be starting up in the next couple of weeks. So for a list of classes, visit beavercreecohio.myrec.com. If you also go under our beavercreecohio.gov and look under parks, you can find the myrec link as well. Planning and development, just reminders, you know, these are the types that you don't like to remind, but, you know, it is grass mowing season. I know just until it just stopped raining, I was mowing my grass every three days. I don't know about you guys, but it's just crazy. So grass or weed in excess of 10 inches, that is the ordinance. So our code enforcement officer's been getting a lot of complaints on grass complaints. But we do want to promote, again, our online permit center, which has been very, very, very successful during the COVID-19. I'm glad we had that operational. It kind of forced the issue in the aspect that it became a necessity for people instead of just coming in, wanting to see our beautiful faces. But since that couldn't happen for a while, that they were, at least had accessibility to being, getting their permits online. So please, check on the statuses and check on inspections. There's many different things that they could check on. So that is under the City of Beaver Creek as well. There's a link to it on the main site, beavercreecohio.gov. You will see it on the left-hand side, it says Permit Center. We just wanted to remind to, you know, a little confusion on this, we are definitely supporting all businesses. But one of the things that, you know, frankly, was decided by the Supreme Court is about advertising on government property. You know, we can't do that. During the COVID-19, we just didn't have enough staff to communicate at the right-of-way, which is usually five, 10, sometimes 15 feet. It's confusing, I know, at times, but it's usually on the other side of the sidewalk where private property starts. So the sidewalk and to the road is actually city-owned. And that's a place that is called the right-of-way, which we don't allow signs to go. So we have been just starting to go out there and talk with the businesses about that. We've asked them to move it back out of the right-of-way onto private property. And normally around the mall area, well, all the areas, quite frankly, of the city, banners and certain signs without a permit, certain types of temporary signs are permitted. But most signs are not permitted. But we are quote-unquote "looking the other way" because we do want to support businesses on those banners, that, you know, the ones that say, hey, we're just now having a reopening and our drive-thru is open and things like that. So we're saying, great, we support that. So we are allowing, or even, I would say encouraging, up through the end of this month to go ahead and advertise your business with, let me specifically say this, not in a right-of-way, but with permission of the property owner. So if you're around the mall, you want to contact the mall. If you're, if it's your business, then you can put it behind the sidewalk, and you're good to go. I will say this as a last thing, though, that the staff is working on a brochure that we will be going out to the businesses and reaching out. So it's a pamphlet, or not a pamphlet, actually, just a flyer that has this information that I just explained, so everybody knows where we are. And we do appreciate all the businesses. At any time, please contact the Planning and Development Department. At any time, if you have any questions towards signs, what the regulation is, you know, if you have, you know, what, if you can't remember what the grass is or anything like that, that's our Planning and Development Department, which we're very proud of. So please feel free to reach out and talk to us. And that's all I have tonight.
All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comments, and this section of the agenda is where council will hear comments from anyone on any subject. But at this time, we do not typically interact and respond. Everyone is asked to limit their comments to three minutes unless they have time donated to them, up to nine minutes. And we ask that everyone give their name and address. So is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue at all? Please come up. Hi.
Hi. Thank you, council members, and I just want to start off by saying thank you for everyone for seeing how open.
How about naming the address?
Oh, I'm Leah Treble, and I live at 3030 Old Heritage Way here in Beaver Creek. And I just wanted to share my thanks, how everyone stated how open they are and willing to listen. And so I just wanted to start off by saying that I'm also a wife and a mother and a healthcare worker and a resident here in Beaver Creek. As you are all aware of the mainly peaceful protest that took place last Monday, June 1st, in remembrance of George Floyd, who was killed in police custody, and our own John Crawford, who was killed by a Beaver Creek police officer, August 5th, 2014. I say mainly a peaceful protest because even prior to the protest, a Beaver Creek school teacher had posted on Facebook, "Let's place bets at what time the violence and looting starts." And I attended the protest, so I know there was a window of a jewelry store that was broken. There was a white racist shouting hateful things. There was tear gas that was deployed without warning. There was an officer who at first seemed to take a knee, when actually he just tied his shoe. Now, once, when sincerity did take place and some officers did kneel and the others removed their riot gear, the energy and atmosphere of the event completely changed. So it is evident that we, as Beaver Creek, we have some work to do. When I looked at the 2018 Beaver Creek Police Annual Report, and I see that approximately 30% use of force was used on African-Americans, and we have 24% arrest report of African-Americans, but yet we only have a 2% African-American population, I have some questions. When I Google black and African-American-owned businesses in Beaver Creek, I find one called So Brand, whose 2017 revenue was approximately $56 million. So this tells me that black-owned businesses are profitable to our cities. Two, another business called Enhance You, which has a partnership with Beaver Creek High School. So I know that black businesses directly have a positive impact on our youth. And the third one was a specialty barbecue sauce sold at Kroger, which I think we can do better. When I see a Beaver Creek teacher who obviously doesn't know When I see a Beaver Creek teacher who obviously doesn't know her history about protests in our country, from the Boston Tea Party to the suffragette movement to civil rights, but says, she assumes they are violent, and I quote, "for selfish and stupid behaviors," I have questions. So to answer these questions and questions that others may have, I propose a town hall meeting. A meeting where we can discuss increased diversity amongst our police force and policies that protect minority citizens and display transparency.
Okay, can you, your three minutes, that was the buzzer, so if you can start to wrap it up, please.
Yeah, this is my last one. A meeting that acknowledges the lack of black-owned businesses and a commitment to increase black-owned businesses, and a meeting to discuss diversity among our educational staff and increased diversity training. A statement made by Beaver Creek denouncing racism and police brutality and a commitment to attract more African-American families to our area. The motto of our high school is "Inspire today, preparing for tomorrow." What are we inspiring for our young people and children?
Okay, we got to wrap this up.
Okay, are we inspiring denial, indifference, and apathy? If so, what is that going to prepare them for, except for our bloody history repeating itself? But what if we inspire in our young people and children that diversity brings economic growth and leads to innovation?
Ma'am, I appreciate your enthusiasm, but everybody gets the same opportunity, so...
Thank you, sir.
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please, come on up.
I'm actually glad to take that off. So my name is Joseph Marks. I am, again, at 3647 Eastern Drive. I totally acknowledge the fact that this has definitely been a very, very rough year and a half. I work for WHIO, so I've been following all the news that's happened in the last year and a half, and it's not fun, but this particularly last two weeks has been very, very trying for me because when I am not at work, I have been attending numerous demonstrations, protests, rallies, and marches, and of my efforts, I have been passing around these flyers at most of these protests and demonstrations. The idea behind them is to offer law enforcement reform proposals, essentially to get a conversation going. They were never intended as, these are what we must do, but rather get people talking because once the anger subsides, I knew that, I knew that eventually, people are either going to get bored and go home, and nothing will get done, which is frankly unacceptable in the current, in the current system, or we can temper that into convictions to actually make proposals. And with a lot of these proposals, I've realized that as of today, the US Congress has actually just put forward the Justice in Policing Act. And when I went to give this flyer to the clerk a few days ago before this meeting, I believe it was Friday, it was explained to me essentially that Beaver Creek, as far as oversight and reform of our police officers, is generally limited because of the charter and because of state law, that generally that falls into the purview of state law, and there's sort of, you guys, our hands were tied as far as what meaningful oversights and reforms you could make to the police officers. But I do believe that there is a power you guys have, and I'm hoping I can get you guys to support that, is that when I speak to Senator Sherrod Brown and Senator Rob Portman, I am speaking with the voice of Joseph Marks. But when you guys speak to them, you're speaking with the voice of the city of Beaver Creek. And so it is my hope that you guys will be able to, especially as a symbolic gesture, show that the city of Beaver Creek is backing behind meaningful police reforms. And yes, our police department is good, but even a good police department should always strive to be even better through meaningful reforms and oversights, in my opinion. And especially, I think it's important for Beaver Creek too, because of the symbolic gesture of John Crawford, that the Black Lives Matter movement, in many ways, picked up steam from an action that took place in Beaver Creek. I wish Sean Williams next-door neighbor, so it isn't that I have a displeasure of police officers. In fact, I genuinely support the need for them. It's just, if we do nothing, this will keep happening, and it will have a, as I'm sure many of you are aware, a $1.7 million settlement consequence repeating over and over. As much as we don't like our taxes, $1.7 million settlements every couple of years when police officers go too far.
Giving you a little leeway, because of the person before, but that's, get to where we can wrap it up.
Sorry. Yes, thank you. I believe that that will probably do a lot more to help save this city money in the long term, is if we can do things to prevent such settlements from occurring in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council tonight on any issue at all? Now, no leeway for you.
Good evening, I'm still here. I left my leeway for this evening. Chad Willing, 2428 Ground Park Drive. So I wanted to follow on some of those comments previously, because I live in a neighborhood that has an untenable situation next door, and we've, fortunate or unfortunately, have experienced the professional and courtesy of the police department on a regular basis for the last few years. So I was not surprised by the compassion, the professionalism, and the respect shown at that rally, because we saw it constantly forever. So I can say, not surprised, but extremely proud of our police force. We see them every day, almost. So to follow up on what I didn't get to finish earlier, I find it interesting when we talk about the levies and will they expire, because it's not only that council allows it, we allow it, right? We chose those millages and that duration to expire when it was finished. Of course, we know they've become continuous in not-so-many words over the years because of growing concerns over our infrastructure, but nothing actually prevents council from presenting that 3.6 million or that 1.0 mil back afterwards. As you stated, I know you're not crazy enough to do that, especially on a successful property tax, but it should at least in solidarity be stated that council will not ask for the 3.6 mils again or the 1.0 mil, because the windfall coming certainly covers that by far and doubles it. So while we're talking about, we're talking about language, there's no actions in that ordinance. It's a discussion of the structure of the tax with only one side of the discussion in place, the collection, not the spending, not the power of the citizens that have demonstrated numerous times that we want to say over control spending. So that's the amount, the percentage in the charter, the credit in the charter, and that should be enough, and potential adjustment on the existing language. Because it's the way it's written now, this is always my favorite, because it will pass Mr. McCune's school bus test, because he can drive it through that wording on the benefit of the city, and we know that's when it's the best for the city, not always the citizens. So thank you very much, and stay sane.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on. Anything for the good?
Move adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.